It being 6:31 on Thursday, May 2nd, I would like to call to order the Planning, Zoning and Historic Commission of East Dundee. So Franco, could we have the roll independently?
No. Commissioner Feck is absent. Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick is absent. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Chair Brunner?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes Braja is absent. And Commissioner Myers?
Here.
So having four members, we do have a quorum. So we will move on to our next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from our April 4th, 2024 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as provided in the package?
For a second, whatever.
Okay. So any discussion on this? Are there any changes we need to make?
I would say yes.
Okay. I'll wait. So we'll say Frank had the motion and Connie had the second.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kruger?
Okay. Moving on now to the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. And I want to give a little bit of overview about what we're going to be talking about here today. We're going to be hearing, doing some public hearings on first, changing the zoning of one of our existing lots in East Dundee, then also granting or hearing a petition to grant a special use to, so that a parking lot could be built on a lot. We're not deciding whether or not any of these things are going to be done. It's just, is it applicable for the land use in town? That being said, you, the floor is now open for anyone wishing to make a public comment either on those items or any, any items in question.
So you're saying that if we were to, I'm sorry?
Yeah. If you could come up and state your name.
I'm sorry. H.I.M.P.E. So you're saying that there's not, this garage that's laid out on a proposal is not what's going there. It's just a proposed idea.
Yeah. So like, let's say we, we vote to approve, it will be, that would allow them, and then the board approves that, it would allow someone to build a garage there.
Okay.
You know, they don't have to build a garage, but it could be.
Among other concerns, my only concern at the moment is that the entrance and exits, on which street it's going to fall on.
Okay.
And according to the plans that I saw, that's in the packet, it's all on Hill Street, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
If it goes out on Jackson Street, it's going to be a problem. I can see it, it's already a problem congestion there with Dairy Queen. It's hard to see around the corner because of diagonal parking when you cross the intersection of River and Jackson. So that's all I, awesome.
The plans do show an exit on Jackson. There's one on both Hill and one on Jackson.
Okay. I didn't notice, I noticed an entrance, entrance and exit on Hill. I didn't see, I saw handicap parking towards Jackson.
Yeah.
But there's also one.
But there's also an ingress and egress. And from, from what I saw in my packet and in the packet online, is that the ground level will exit out onto Jackson, the ground level will exit out onto Hill Street. The, the proposed structure, the multi, the multi-story structure was all above the area not on the 309 Jackson lot, just on the 304 Hill. But anybody coming down, when they get down, the way I view it, when they get down to that ground level in the parking garage, they can turn left and go around and come out on Hill, or they can turn right and go right out on Jackson.
I see issue with that.
Yeah.
I'm on first.
Yeah. So I would encourage you, if you have issue with the, the plan as proposed.
Yep.
They will likely be talking about it at our meeting on Monday for the village board, and that's where it could get approved. And you can definitely raise your.
Same location?
Yes.
Same time?
Six.
No, they, they meet at six, right?
Yeah, at six.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Okay. Seeing no one else, we will move on to our first order of new business. So could I have a motion to open the public hearing for a request rezone 309 Jackson Street, East Dundee, Illinois, 60118, PIN 0323320006, from R3 Single Family Residence District to B1 Downtown Business District as described in Section 157051?
Motion to open.
Okay.
Well, sir.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So first, Franco, do we have any emails, calls, anyone who sent in information regarding this zoning change?
Not the zoning change.
Not the zoning change. Okay. Okay. So with that, then I think we'll move on to the proposal by the petitioner. Franco, are you prepared to?
Sure.
Make the application?
Sure. So as part of the goal of the village to propose a parking garage at 309 Jackson and 304 Hill Street, zoning has to be addressed. 304 Hill Street, the parcel is already a B1, which is the B1 Business Downtown District, whereas 309 Jackson has a vacant lot and is currently an R3 Resident District. In order for the parking garage or any type of parking to be permitted as a special use in the B1, a rezoning needs to change. And staff believes that the B1 is a logical rezoning choice that is also contiguous to other B1 zoning in the downtown.
Fantastic. Okay. So commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
No. Okay. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this topic?
There used to be a house there.
Yeah. If you would like to come up, and you'll have to be sworn in.
Thank you.
Hi. If you don't mind stating your name.
My name is Mary Toppel, T-O-P-P-E-L.
And if you don't mind raising your hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm not concerned about the, I know there was a house there. I've lived in East Dundee all my life.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? My father was on the East Dundee Fire Department many years ago. My main name is Nate Herman. I'm not concerned about rezoning that, but I am very concerned about having any entrances or exits on Jackson Street. You're going to lose three parking spots to begin with on Jackson. Okay? That's number one. Number two is, some of the patrons from Bandero Barney's will sit, get a little intoxicated, and they're trying to find their vehicle, and they will sit in the middle of Jackson Street until they're sober enough to get up and they will find their vehicle and go home. My concern is people going in and out of there, if they're a little bit intoxicated, I don't want anybody being run over. That's my main concern. I'm concerned for everybody's safety.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. That's all I have.
Okay.
Are we in open discussion?
We're in the public hearing.
Well, we, this is a public hearing. We can then take the facts we have from here, and then we'll have our discussion in regards to doing our recommendation.
Yep.
After this is closed.
Perfect.
Okay. So may then I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Good. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
So do you, do you have something you'd like?
Just the Jackson Street exit entrance, I would assume that, I haven't seen a drawing or anything. Seems that that is probably going to be utilized for a strict exit entrance, and then on Hill Street, exit entrance, maybe one-way. Is that the kind of plan? Have we seen a drawing? And I, I mean, I didn't know up until, you know, getting the packet that Jackson Street was going to be part of this parking garage plan. So just, I would assume, nothing set in stone, but the plan is to have that as an exit, egress, egress.
Yeah. I, I thought of it more of like as an entrance, as, as opposed to an egress.
Okay. So this would be just a, a one-way possibly, right?
If anyone has any more specific questions, we have a member from McQ here, who's part of the construction team.
Cool.
Yeah.
I've got some bigger drawings.
Yeah. Cool. So I, I would add that, you know, and it's my at least belief in regards to approving zoning, we're not considering the actual thing being built.
Right.
Wait. I, what I suggest especially, because if we have questions for somebody, an applicant in the public hearing for the rezoning, technically has, has already been, been closed. So my suggestion would be to deliberate and vote then just on the rezoning itself, and then the next public hearing is on the actual special use for the parking.
Yes.
Which would make more sense to kind of discuss.
Yes, yes. Say, excuse me, could we, Connie, could we wait to seeing this in the?
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I know.
Now I know what I'm having about.
No, that's, if, if that.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I think that to me makes more sense, because then we can talk about, in the special use, we can talk about the suitability of the land for, for a parking garage covering the whole thing, which one would assume would require an entrance on this, because that would be a horrible dead end in a parking garage.
Yes.
Very much, yes.
Yeah. And I, and I think if, if we want to allow someone from the engineering design or to speak, we have another public hearing opportunity for that, at that time.
Right. So yeah, so I guess to maybe re-center this, the decision of this, this, this rezoning, the things that we, that our ordinance says we should consider is existing uses of the property within the general area of the property in question, the zoning classification of property within the general area of the property in question, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing classification, and the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, changes if any, have taken place since the day the property in question was placed in its present zoning classification. So, so to me, you know, I heard the petitioner say, one, important, B1, is it's already adjacent to B1, we're not doing spot zoning, which is really bad. The fact that it actually is ordered on B1 on two sides even, I think makes it even more justifiable. And also with it as an R3 in a giant development just to the east of it, if you know that's a multi-unit house with a parking lot going right up against, the likelihood that that would be used for residential again, I think is very low.
Right.
You know, for a single-family home to be built there now. So I think that, that goes into a lot of, several of these things, but I, that's, I guess my take. Be willing to, sorry, maybe dump too much.
No, yeah, just thinking aloud, it's appropriate that we would rezon that, yeah. I understand that, if it's going to be either a, you know, blacktop asphalt parking lot or exit, egress out of that.
Yeah, yeah. Or, I mean, it could, you could say that theoretically, River Street could expand into it. Right? Right now they can't. If they wanted to buy that lot and, you know, add a beer garden there.
Sure.
They can't do that now.
Yep.
But this would allow them to do something like that as another potential use for that property.
Makes sense.
As a rezon.
Yeah, as a rezon. You know, it makes it usable by the businesses.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other discussion we want to have on this before we, I will, we'll need a motion, but before we set our recommendation? We also could do the findings of fact first. Okay. How about we do the findings of fact first?
These are not necessarily questions, but more so as a guide for the PZUC to consider, just like how you did, you read them out loud, and that was the guidance that you used.
Okay. So yeah, so do we believe that, that this, this rezoning would be injurious to?
I do, I do not.
Okay. Do we believe that is, the zoning clas, zoning classification of property within the general area?
It's the concern.
Yeah, yes. So we don't, we think it, it matches what's around it, we think it's suitable, and it's following the general trends of development down there, increasing as, okay. So, so can we have a then findings of fact approval on a motion to approve the findings of fact saying yes to all those criteria?
I'd approve the findings of fact.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then may I, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'm going to get used to that now. Can totally do it. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the board the approval of the zoning change of 309 Jackson Street, East Dundee IL, 60118, PIN 0323320006, from R3 Single Family Residence District to B1 Downtown District as described in Section 157051.
I'd second that.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Upstate.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know how that will then work.
It goes for extensions goes with the majority.
And the, and the extension goes with the majority vote, as long as it's not like a stretched or the affirmative vote, which this is not a census recommendation.
Okay.
So it passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm glad you're here. Okay, fantastic. So then, moving on to the second order of business, may I have a motion to open the public hearing in conjunction with a request to rezon the property, well, here. The way it's written, I'm going to restart that. May I have a motion to open a public hearing to issue a special use permit as described in Section 157050F1G3 for us, parking lot to be enabled at 309 Jackson Street, East Dundee IL, 60118, PIN 032332006, in the R3 Single Family Resident District, then to be located at 304 Hill Street, East Dundee IL, 60118, PIN 032332001, in the B1 Downtown Business District.
I will make that motion with one question. It's listed as R3 Single Family because until, we're going to recommend to the board to change it, but as we sit here today, it's residential.
Yes.
And then, but does residential allow for parking?
So you can do all of this at the same time and recommend it. When it goes to the board, if they don't pass the rezoning, then the special use would just not be able to, to pass as well. So it'll be kind of, that's why we, when the board will do it, it'll be done in a certain order. And, or if it's all in consent, it would just be listed.
And I would definitely be willing to add that specifically on there in our recommendation. You know, assuming that this gets rezoned, is what we want.
Yes. Yeah. And oftentimes, like, the board, like, the condition of like a special use would be the rezoning. Like, effective once the rezoning is passed or things like that, because it can't be, if the special use is not allowed in that area, it would have to, the rezoning has to pass to the specials to be approached, if that makes sense. But you can certainly recommend them both at the same time. And kind of, the recommendation will be, you can assume at this point that the, it's it.
They're going to rezon.
Yes.
Yeah. And there's no issue with it being two properties for one, one build-out, right? And no, and, and if we, and if it does get violated by the zoning not being passed, since this is a single special use tying together two properties, it fails completely, right? It would be not applicable completely. It wouldn't just pass on the one that is already so.
Right. Oh. But isn't there, is there a special division that needs to be put? If you don't rezon it into one single lot, don't you need some, I don't know if it comes before this board or the zone, or the utility board, to build over the lot line?
In this case, I mean, oftentimes, if you're combining two properties to do one development, you would do a subdivision.
Right.
Sounds like it's combining property, but it's.
Right. Yeah. If it reassembles or, yeah.
To be honest, I mean, Franco, I don't know if this is property is planned, being combined into together, and that's not before us at the, at the moment. But that's, you know, as it moves forward, if it needs to be.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, the, the lot I live on is, are two lots, and the lot line goes right through the middle of my house, but I thought that there was something in our code. Joe, maybe you know that.
I think there's a definition for a zoning lot.
Yeah. If you're using property, so you can formally subdivide property, and then, and I will rely on your knowledge of the code, that the zoning lot is in there, because that would allow you. And then if you're using property as one zoning lot, it means that you can't, you have to, you can only have like, you have to use it as, as one lot. Like, you can't put two garages on it, or you know, something like that, because it's two properties, you can't, you know, that's a whole world type of situation. So that would be, if there, if it's not going to be formally subdivided, it would.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for that clarification, then my motion to open the public hearing stands.
Fantastic. Yeah, I need a second. I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay. So Franco, did we get any calls or emails in regards to the special use application?
I did not get any formal emails or letters, but I, I did receive calls or front walk-ins and passing around town from various people that I don't have names from, some expressing for and some expressing against the parking, proposed parking garage for this. But I don't have any formal written testimony or notification.
Okay. And this is specifically for, okay, special for parking? And, and I look, we don't have something special for parking garage?
Right. This is a similarities.
Yeah. So how is this different than like a, just a normal parking lot, that like, you know, business would have as part of their, of their normal, you know, if their, private parking is part of their establishment?
I think this would be specific for parking, like if your business is parking.
Yes.
Not a business with parking, but if your goal is just parking.
So, so if we do like municipal lots, do we have to zone those as parking?
Yeah, they would, they would still need all the zoning and all the requirements and private parking.
Yeah, it said on, in our zoning, it said commercial, you know, parking, commercial. And, and I think it being owned by the village, I, 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 yeah.
It's a matter to err in the side of caution and go through this.
And I think really it's the, the distinction between, I think definitely building a garage, we need a special use, because that's a huge thing, but we have nothing else like that. But providing a municipal parking lot in a B, in the B1 district, I don't know if that, you know?
Yeah, I don't know what the code states.
Don't we have one behind the caboose that isn't that?
Yes, that one is, and, and so is the one behind, like DC cops and.
Yeah. I saw that, okay.
Yeah. So, you know, you don't pay, it's owned by the village, you know? And that's what this, this property is owned by. Do you have additional things that you would like to say about this, this application?
Well, this is a little bit more unique than just standard parking, because it would also allow for the potential, if the board approves, of commercial development. If it's a parking garage with the potential of 6,000 square feet of commercial or retail in the front. So it's a little bit more than just a parking lot, the municipal lot where we have in our downtown. There would need to be utilities, there would need to be proper drainage and road access as stated in our findings of fact, that would make sense to this type of use. Staff feels that this is actually an enhancement to the downtown because of not only meeting the parking from the engineer's report of the parking memo that was presented a while back to the village board, but also enhancing the downtown by incorporating store furniture for potential use, however the board feels fit. And it's in line with the con-plan to promote and enhance the downtown for both businesses and residents.
Okay.
Did you want to say these?
I, I'm going to want to look at them for the historic, when we talk about the historic stuff. So questions for the petitioner?
No, I think this falls in line. I think it's appropriate.
So I would like to hear in, in this case from the engineer.
Of the representative from McQ Construction? Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
David, if you don't mind getting sworn in here, this is a public hearing. If you don't mind stating your name for the record?
David Stephanhagen.
And David, if you could raise your hand, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
I do.
So I think what I would like to hear is some of your thoughts around the traffic flow that would be driven by a parking garage or a parking facility built on a lot with this L shape and its specific, you know, accesses to roads. Is this, is this within your area of expertise?
So the actual traffic flow in the community is not within my expertise, but the location of the entrances into the garage is. And so I work for the general contractor, McQ, and our partner is Desmond, who's the architect and the designer for, for the structure. So when, you know, working with the board and trying to choose the locations for the entrances off of Jackson and Hill, you know, we considered maximizing parking spaces inside the structure. So that's what drove the location on Hill, you know, how far off of River Street that entrance was going to be. So I guess that's, that's what I have to say about that.
Perhaps their village engineer?
Yes. Joe, do you have any comments on this, on the same question?
Well, I'm glad to see two entrances, you're having splitting the traffic. As far as safety, you might be able to enhance that with some lighting. Obviously you want to be a little.
Yeah. Signing.
Signing too, but more so lighting to see if someone's in the middle of the road.
Yeah, and I would probably argue from a public safety perspective too, that two entrances probably.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think I, I agree. Just making sure that, that this, you know, from our perspective, we feel that doing a joint lock between these three kind of lots.
The three levels?
Well, it's the, the way the L, this L shape.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a traditional, let's say, you know, it's not square.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else has any questions along that route, or I just wanted it out on the record.
I have some questions. So you're working for the general contractor there?
Correct.
Do you know much about the retail spaces?
So right now, the retail space is about 6,000 square feet right on River Street, and it's, it's a gray box as, as designed right now. So it could be built out by a future tenant.
Okay. So when you say gray box, I was in commercial property management for 35 years, it meant the same thing as vanilla box?
Yeah. Vanilla white box.
So there'll be a basic electric panel and probably a concrete floor and some walls, and a tenant will come in and do the build-out?
Right. We'll have water stubbed in there, sewer stubbed in. There'll be some, there'll be sprinkler, sprinkler system in there. The, the slab is going to be left out, just because typically it gets changed with.
Put the other on utilities, I'm sure.
Right.
And then the, is the garage going to be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay, dry system?
It'll all be a dry system.
Okay.
With a dry standpipe for the fire department.
Okay. And, so that's 6,000, the, the thing I didn't see on there is, so I, I would assume all
Right, we'll have water stubbed in there, sewer stubbed in, um, there'll be some, there'll be sprinkler, uh, sprinkler system in there. Uh, the, the slab is gonna be left out just because typically it gets changed with.
Put the other on utilities, I'm sure.
Right.
Right. And then the, uh, is the garage gonna be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay, dry system?
It'll all be a dry system. With a, a dry standpipe for the fire department.
Okay, and, um, that's six thousand. The, the thing I didn't see on there is, uh, so I, I would assume all those spaces will have some type of air conditioning and things of that nature. And not that I expected to see the inside plans, but the condensing units and things that would typically be outside of the parking lot above it, where would, where would the condensers and things of that, uh, and, and should one of those become another restaurant or bar and they need some other type of cooking exhaust or things like that, where would that be? Cause it would have to exhaust either into the garage or take up some of the parking spaces in the garage.
Right, I think, I think Franco could speak on the limitations with the restaurant?
Yeah, um, so there would be a utility room in the back designated by the, between the gray box and the parking. However, there is a, um, restrictive covenant, I believe it's called, on what can be there for now. So, right now, we're not too worried about, uh, restaurants or bars being bad.
And so, typically this, you know, 6,000 square feet would be cooled with like a split unit type of system, which would be punched out.
Similar to a house.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And, uh, there's some potential location, like Franco said, kind of where there's some, uh, utility, the electric room and the water room. So there's some space there. It's kind of hard to determine without knowing the actual intended use of the space or the finished intended use, but there's options.
It would cross from.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, is, will the concrete parking deck be the roof of the unit?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, Joe, is, is that entire lot already considered as impervious? Or is there gonna have to be some type of stormwater management to maintain?
Right, we'd have to go back to the 2,000 line and see what existed back then.
So if you have to, you're gonna do it on the ground, inside pipes, or a vault?
Right.
So we currently have, uh, inside the garage drainage system, along with the surface lot has a drainage system. Everything's tied into the municipal sewer system. Um, and then the roof over the, uh, commercial space has got like a traffic coating that's designed specifically for this use.
But do, I guess, do you have any type of a vault planned in the current plans to be built? If, if the release rate into the, into the, uh, storm sewer in the street, if, if that can't just be free flowing, you're gonna need some type of a vault under the parking surface or, or oversized pipes to hold that water.
So, right now, we have a triple oil basin.
Right.
You know, obviously to separate the, the oil from the water.
Right, correct.
We don't have, we haven't gotten that far into the design to see if we need any type of flat, backflow restrictors or any other type of containment for the structure.
Okay. Yes, fundamentally, you're concerned about where all the water goes, there's no.
Well, I'm concerned about the water, but I'm also concerned about the, the, to me, the price of this whole thing is astronomical. And, um, uh, and under, I, I mean, I know from building them, is an underground vault very expensive to build? And even oversizing the pipes, and I'm sure Joe can attest to it, but it's, uh, I mean, if, if, if they figure out that the lot is already pretty much ninety-five percent impervious, uh, and all the water flows into the river anyways, then maybe you won't need anything, but I think that's.
Yeah, if, if the lot's less than an acre.
Less than an acre, which is.
Detention, but you will need the BMPs, which is one inch over the new impervious, so that's what we're looking for.
Isn't, this lot must be pretty close to an acre, right? Together?
Probably, but I think it's under.
Like point six, point six acres, something like that.
Point six, okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, and do you have any rough ideas for, to build the vanilla, the vanilla or gray box? How much a square foot?
No, not yet, um, so we're still in preliminary design stages. We would need some more feedback from the board as what they want that space to be, how they want it built out. Right now, we're assuming it's just, uh, center block walls, um, and potentially some insulation, so.
Okay, yeah, cause I, when, I know current numbers, I know a box is about a hundred and eighty a square foot, but then the tenant that comes in is gonna spend another hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty to do the build out. So at the end of the day, the pay for all that, we're gonna have to, the rent, if, if, if the, the village were to turn it over in turnkey fashion, they'd have to be getting forty-two, forty-three dollars a square foot, which you can get downtown Chicago with a little bit. I don't know that you're gonna get in downtown East Endy, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Okay, are there any other points of discussion that we would like to include in the public hearing or questions?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion to close the, uh, I make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a chance for me to throw one later on?
Oh yeah, you guys can come up, yeah, yeah, it's anybody can stop talking in the public hearing.
Sorry, if, if you don't mind.
Michael Hampe?
Michael.
H I M P.
Thank you, and if you swear to tell the truth, to hold truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So there were some soil borings done back last year, does that answer the question about the impervious? Does it even answer that? Anybody aware of that?
Yeah, that, that soil borings would be to tell the, how, how suitable the ground is to support the structure. What I'm talking about is, is land, when you roll over a certain amount of tang and cover up the stuff, it, it won't soak up any water.
So the soil borings then are, they determine that we can put the structure there, just on bigger casings or something?
Right.
Okay, and I want to be one more point about the, the, um, Jackson Street and Hill entrance and exits. You see streets that, uh, there's some in West Dundee, there's some in Carpersville that end at a main, you know, map, the subdivision street that ends at a main street you came in through.
Yep.
Right, so that's the same, that's kind of the same business for having that garage, that, that'll be an immediate cut through for someone doing something illegal or inappropriate, that could be a way to get them out of there. I see both sides of it, I see if there was a problem in the structure and you needed to get people out of it in a hurry. I see having an accident on Jackson, but at the same token, I also see people cutting through there for other reasons, so, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Yes, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, second?
Right, second.
Okay, Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Krueger?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to initiate the discussion on, on this from property perspective and building, parking in general?
Yeah, I'll start, uh, I'm just not in favor of it, I, I think it's way too expensive, uh, I, I personally, I also don't wanna see the village get into another, uh, another real estate transaction with, uh, owning property, lease out. I, I just think what happened at Summit School was a colossal failure. And, uh, even if we spent a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot to build a vanilla box, I don't know. I, I just feel as I go up and down our, our areas here, and nothing against some of these businesses, but if, if we needed retail space, uh, the jujitsu guy wouldn't be there, they'd, they'd be somewhere else. So, we have plenty of, plenty of available space for businesses to locate in if we need it. And to me, if, if a business wants to go there, the business should approach the village on, on buying the land and building it. I do, I do like the spirit that came from the board in putting a retail there, that, that makes sense, but I just don't think we should be the ones doing it. With respect to the, the garage, I, I just don't, I, I don't think a, a parking garage in our downtown fits, uh, fits the, uh, the narrative. Well, it may fit the narrative, but it doesn't, it doesn't fit the surroundings, I, I just, I, I don't think we need it. And if you do the computation, uh, the hundred and twenty-five spaces versus the eighty-eight spaces, those additional thirty-seven spaces are costing almost $200,000 each. And I, I know that staff, I appreciate some of the work you guys have done to put some of the parking things together. For the last six months, I've been walking the downtown area at, on Friday and Saturday night. And we do have a parking problem for like two to three hours on a Friday and two to three hours on a Saturday. We definitely have a parking issue when we have an event going on that knocks out sixty of our parking spaces. But I just think we can do it with surface lots, I, I just, I don't, it, I, I just think it's, it's, it's way overboard and, uh, I know I've probably expounded beyond the scope of what this board is, or this commission is supposed to find. So I guess with that in mind is, I, I just don't think it fits the neighborhood.
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll re-center us on the specific special use, which is parking. We're not being a, even asked to approve a parking garage.
But that's in the description of what we're doing.
It's in the memo, it doesn't say, in the historic commission, it has a garage.
Right.
But here, it says parking.
Right, but if we, since there is no differentiation, it's false. In my, in my eyes, it's false.
Yeah.
Because if, if we approve, I mean, unless, unless we quantify the special use to say surface lot only and no elevated structure, then, I mean, if you wanna put that caveat in, then I'm okay with it, but.
Yeah, so you're saying because you, you're reading into the intention of the use beyond the scope of this special use, we know what it's for?
Yes.
You don't.
Well, yeah, the, the, the village is the applicant, the village presented us a plan of what they intend to build, and they intend to build a garage, they don't intend to build a surface lot.
How much is that garage? Does anybody know, ten million?
We have to stick to land use.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm just asking.
Well, I know.
And I'm just paying for it.
Joe, Joe put a memo out two and a half years ago that a garage would be seven and a half million without the retail, and the parking would be four hundred and fifty thousand if you just.
And who's paying for?
No, that's not right.
To taxes.
There is, it's, it's a complicated thing, it's best to follow the, 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 the presentations at the board and the reports that they've made. It's too complicated to explain.
It's, it's complex, it's all online, it's all in the board packets, to the board.
So.
We have to stick to the land use, I understand your concerns, but as, I would be a pretty crappy staff member if I didn't direct the PZHC to stick to the law of land use.
Yeah.
Oh, so you have to read about it in the minutes and stuff, or be at one of the board meetings, will they talk about it?
Yeah, exactly, the past ones, and I could email you then to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
So, other people?
Yeah, so, so, so I guess from the land use perspective, I, I just don't think it, it fits. I, I, I just don't, I don't, uh, if, if we want to craft the, I guess, as presented, I'm not in favor of it. If we restrict it to a surface lot parking only, then I'd be in favor.
Okay.
Because, because our code doesn't differentiate between a commercial parking lot and a commercial parking garage, there's only one way they could apply for parking.
Yes, I mean, we obviously in the B one have other surface lots all over the place, so saying it's not, that's not fitting, I think is.
Yeah, no, no, I, for a surface lot, I would say it's fitting, but, uh, because we could grant that and then they'd build a garage.
Yes, okay, I understand the point, definitely. Charlie, you have anything you'd like to, to say?
We've been talking about it for years, we have a, we have a parking issue, we've gotten a lot, we've done a lot to get here. Is it the best spot for a parking garage? I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would really have to think about it more, come up with an educated answer, but we, we do need parking, I think.
And it is land we now own.
It's land we now own, I think this is our opportunity to go for it. I, I don't know about the residential, I, I don't.
You mean the retail?
The, yeah, the retail, sorry about that, I don't know if the village wants to be landlords right now, but that's, that's not our job. That, that's not our school.
And that doesn't need a special use.
No, that B one already.
It's, those would be permitted.
Yeah, yeah, they could build right now, retail right in the, on, not, well, if they rezone this, they could even build it in the back. Put on the stuff next to the jujitsu place. Which I guess that was rezoned to be one when they tore down the old house, must have been.
Was it?
There was that, the house that was there before, the big crazy.
Oh, yeah.
The pink, the pink house, that's how I grew up, knowing I'm gone.
I heard a lot about it, I've never seen it.
It was incredible, it should've been a museum.
Yeah, yeah.
But, we, we've been looking at this gravel parking lot for how many years? And then we even parked on it for a while, you know, when I was frequenting downtown.
Right, exactly.
Consumer, when I didn't live here, but I would come down here and frequent it, we were parking there.
Yeah, they always do that for like a summer, I think, after they're done.
We have gravel parking lots all over the place, I think it's time to do something with one of these lots.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah.
We, we, I think we do need a garage whenever you go anywhere else in any other town, I'm not gonna name names of towns, but we have garages there. Some of them don't get used at all, unless the people are sleeping in there. I hope that, that doesn't tie in this, we're gonna need more police.
Well, it's definitely a question, once again, I mean, I think you're raising some questions that, you know, and feel free to go to the village board meeting and raise your concerns there.
And I, I agree with trustee Scarpelli, when, we don't know what we're voting on exactly.
Yeah.
I would love to just park there, that'd be great, I don't know if we, if we should kick the can down the road and just throw asphalt down, but.
Yeah, we are all residents, you can come to the meeting, you know, you can say as a resident, you know, this doesn't, you know, it doesn't fit. That can be a separate opinion than, you know, the land use and parking. So, yeah, especially if you're concerned about the cost, I mean.
Yeah, and bring it, we need to talk about that, but I, I would be, I would suggest that we rezone this to parking lot and, uh, for a special use for that.
Okay, and, uh, how do you have anything that you wanna add?
Well, there's variables there too, like the space, if, if the people came in and, they're just themselves, whoever was gonna run it out, we'd have to pay for it as a village, and some, most of the, if money was soaked up by, like, state, which I think there was some funds I heard through the Great Vine that they got from the state Springfield, um, maybe, but I don't wanna pay for it. And I think it does.
I just really would remind you that the cost and the payment is just outside the zoning jurisdiction, um, so just, the, you certainly are welcome to those opinions, but the village board is the one that makes the decisions on the, like, financing of this, and we really need to stick to the zoning and land use components, like the requests.
Well, I know we need it, but I know a lot of people park on the side streets.
I think so.
So, I don't know.
So, okay, so I think, thanks for the, the, your, your thoughts. So I think we, we heard from everybody, right? So, um, let's go through that, I think the finding's a fact, and we'll see, see what we think, right? So, um, first one is, the use is not interest to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. So does anyone want to provide their initial opinion on that? I think we have to consider, well, I'll say, it is a gravel lot now. It has been for many years. And this is for parking, I think, um, you may consider parking holistically since we can't separate garage from, uh, surface lot, apparently. But, I would, I would appreciate your, your thoughts when making your, you know, expressing your opinion on what you're thinking, but.
Yeah, anyway, well, my thought is that for a flat lot, I would say no, for a garage, I would say yes.
Okay.
So.
So, okay, well then, let's, let's, let's vote on that one then, so, um, well, this is, these aren't official votes, I'm just trying to get a. And I can do that in a discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, in general, would people be, so with this one, we'll say, um, who would be in favor of, well, County, would you be in favor of saying yes, this is not, would not diminish or impair property values and, uh, and in.
Right, it, I don't think it would.
Okay, and, and Charlie, and then you?
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree that it would not.
Okay, and then you?
I think it would.
Okay, so, and I think it would, uh, would not, so that's gonna be three, three to one, so we'll put that on there. And then you'll get to vote on this and, and vote against it if you don't like it. So, yes, there. So, the use will not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. I'll start with Charlie this time.
Well, that, would there be increased tra- traffic on Hill and Jackson Street? Yes, there would be, so.
I think, yeah, here though, it would actually, it won't get in the way of like, let's say, uh, you know, things that we like, additional businesses coming downtown, it wouldn't like block, um, you know, the plans we would have for the development. I think in general, we think it will encourage development downtown, right? So it, it, so I think it's like the opposite of impede, based on what the goal of this development would be.
Either way, like you said, Friday and Saturday, we have traffic, that's just the way it is.
I mean, it can be that way on Thursday, it's getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
So I think, I would.
I'm okay with the law too.
So, the, will not impede, so will not impede.
No.
So that would be.
So, so Commissioner Scarpelli is saying it will impede?
No, no, no.
Okay, so then, so what you guys are looking for is yes, it will not impede?
It will not, I, I write yes to say not impede.
Even though they filled it out saying no? When they established, you know, this is, this is what the village here does.
No, it's in our, in my findings, a fact, it has a not in it. Yours does not.
Wait, I don't, I don't think it was, that the finding effect.
He's looking at the application.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
They changed my word.
Yeah, right, yeah, it keeps us on our toes. Adequate utilities, roads, drainage, or necessary facilities that have been or will be provided. We can go by what our, uh, village engineer said during the discussion there, I think. So, we think that's a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so as designed to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets.
I think that's a yes.
I'd say yes too.
Okay, and you, County? Yes. Okay, and then how is a proposed special use in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the Village of East Dundee Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other plan, program ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to the official notice by the village? And we have the, as, as the applicant said, to provide for an adequate and attractive commercial basis or the needs, uh, and residents of, uh, East. And we have the, as, as the applicant said, to provide for an adequate and attractive commercial basis or the needs and residence of East Dundee. So, I believe that's in line. That would be more for the commercial base, attractive commercial base, not necessarily the village residence part. But do we agree with that statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I would like a motion to approve the findings of fact with four yeses and the statement on being in alignment with our comprehensive plan. I'd make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
A second.
I have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
I'm staying.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now on to the recommendation. And we can. I say we make the recommendation without, we do, I would, I would entertain a vote on a motion without constraints. As, as stated in the applicant's request, just for parking.
I understand the reasoning behind that. So the village board, I'd love to discuss what kind of parking they're going to decide to put there. We're just placing it, the recommendation to say that we think that it's adequate for parking, it's a good place for parking.
And, and I will, I will state, just to remind everyone again, the, the way our government works, we provide recommendations, they go to the board. If, if we say no, the applicant can appeal to the board. In this case, the applicant is the board, is the village, so they can override us for their own thing.
The applicant is the village.
The applicant is the village. Yeah, not the board, the applicant is the village, the board can.
Because the appeals process is the board's, the village would appeal for the board.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yes.
So, so it's part of the reasoning behind making the motion as is, I think, I think it's very direct that way, and then they can talk about the whole thing. They'll be able to watch our notes and hear our positions. They'll know we talked about maybe having a, you know, everyone in agreement on being cool with the parking lot, but, you know, I like the simpler motion. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to recommend to the board the granting of a special use for property, for parking at, as described in section 157050 F1G3 to be located at 309 Jackson Street, East Dundee IL 60118 PIN 0323, 32006 in the R3 Single Family Residence District, and to be located at 304 Hill Street, East Dundee, Illinois 60118 PIN 0323320001 in the B1 Downtown District business, with the caveat that the R3 business is rezoned to B1, in line with our previous recommendation.
Very nice to put, Chair. I'd second that.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
No.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay.
So that one, well, it's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Counsel? Three to one?
Uh, three to one, it needs two, let me just pull up the exact language of that, but I was really just looking at it, sorry. It needs four votes to recommend to approval, let me just pull up the exact language, so I'm telling you correctly what the, how it goes to the board. Okay, so I concur the vote of a, of a, I'm sorry, that's for amendments, I need to be in special use. It depends on the, the, some, for some of ours, for an amendment, it requires a majority of the vote for the rezoning and special use requires.
We could definitely take this offline and have staff.
Yeah.
In our council.
Yes, definitely.
I mean, the vote's been made.
Yeah.
No, I know, I just want to answer this question, and I apologize for not knowing it off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
If you want to keep going, I promise we'll find this.
Yeah, we have staff reports at the end, you can add it then. Okay, so then moving on to our, our next item, which will be the historic commission items and a, a hearing, or I guess it's not a hearing, just an application for a certificate of appropriateness regarding the design of the proposed parking garage. So, may I have a, I don't need a motion, you just need to move to this one, right? We don't need a motion to open this, we can just start a discussion.
Correct.
So, could we, so applicant, would you like to start, or would you like our representative, your representative here to describe?
David, you can come up here and discuss this. Basically, we're looking, as you see from the application, that it is a new construction, so it triggered a certificate of appropriateness in the historic district. We're looking for guidance on the colors of the brick, and not necessarily the architectural features that were pretty much agreed upon. We're looking for guidance on the color of the brick and, yeah, appropriateness.
So, so agreed upon, I think it's our latitude here to be able to describe, or to say whether we think that's appropriate as well.
Exactly, you could, you still could.
Yes. But thank you, yes, but you're definitely looking for feedback.
We're looking for feedback on the.
Yeah, specifically.
The picture is for sure.
So, what we were asked to do was find several different brick colors that match other buildings in East Dundee. And so, these are the samples that we're able to get together for this meeting. So the actual location of the color is just selected by the board, but, running out of hands here.
Would it be okay if you pass those around?
Sure.
But is that color white, that's the building they have in the picture?
So, it's, it's more like, it's somewhere between these.
Yeah, it looks like this more.
So there were two different, two different colors. This color was meant to be the color of the bridge, in this street.
Oh, the bridge.
So at the last board meeting, the board discussed the colors of the bricks, and they were leaning towards the one with the tan red, tan red schematics. But we also asked McQ to provide other samples based on what the board said from the meeting. They're looking for more natural earth tone colors that match the surrounding character, and to consider potentially the tan red and then two other options of the. If you look at the one unit, it looks like it's four units, just for aesthetics purposes, so this is what you're looking at, although it's one unit.
I think the darker yellow one, yeah, that's why. We have others though that look kind of like that.
Yeah, like that, he had it like that with different bricks.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So it will be, they're going to be modeled if.
Yeah, they, what we're asked is to try to break it up, so it didn't look like that.
So like the combo between those two, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in between these.
Yeah, so like some of them like that, some of them like that.
But, and, uh, DC Cobb building, that's got some gray brick, and it's got some red brick, and then it's got the hager brick.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So it's, I think it would look, I think it would be fitting in that general style. So, okay, so do we have any questions for the applicant on, on the general aesthetics of the look, things, additional materials, and styling?
We pick two?
We can pick two, I mean.
So, yeah, are they, are they asking for us to pick two, and then?
Well, we, we can say like which one we prefer, right? To be most, you know, fitting with the existing aesthetics of our downtown. You know, these being the options, we can, we could say none of them are acceptable.
Sure.
But then we could say, yeah, we think these are acceptable in this order of preference.
I think we've, I think we've used a good amount of light.
I like your picture you got.
I can pass this.
I think we've used a good amount of the lighter side of brick.
Yeah, 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 we've, we've done a lot with that, and it looks great, but I think.
It, will, will this actually be brick, or will it be stamped concrete?
It will be brick.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have they considered stamped concrete, just color or tinted?
No, that has not been considered.
Yeah, that's, I think, a cheaper solution, generally.
Well, yeah, it's less expensive.
And also note the lighting fixtures that were chosen to break up the, not.
Right, the goosenecks?
Yeah.
Which we have in other places. Yeah, and I know we've talked about before the black awnings, which is, oh, it's like, the black awnings are usable, I mean, are in use in other businesses in town, in our business district. You know, we had a question before about it being in residential and maybe had some issues about it when it was in a residential zone business, or a building that felt more like a house. But this, I think, fits with our other, our other look. And you can even see right down here, you have a rendering of River Street Tavern, more or less all the way at the edge. Which I think is interesting, I mean, I don't know how familiar you are right now thinking of it, but I believe this look blends really well with River Street. So specifically, this, this action, I think, looks very much like the front of River Street right now.
Very much so, yeah.
So, I think it makes it a nice, you know, pass these down, a nice strip all the way down to the Jiu-Jitsu Place to River Street. You know, it's a nice contiguous block, really, that I think will, will fit pretty well together.
Desmond said that the red brick pattern and the brown brick is intended to mimic the Rock 72 Bridge.
Okay. So, I would say, do we want to talk at all about the part going up, Hill Street? You know, that, you can see it on. Yeah, could you describe what, what that's going to look like?
So, so right now, that's designed to be painted concrete, painted black concrete with a lit parking sign above the Hill Street entrance.
So.
Could that be stamped with brick?
That is an option.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So. Yeah, so that's the all the way up.
And then the tower at the far, that would be the far east end on Hill Street, up at, up at the back.
Correct.
Is that tower also then just concrete, painted?
Yes, painted, yes, it's painted concrete, with a roof on top of it.
Okay. And are those flat roofs or slightly pitched?
It'll be slightly pitched with scuppers.
Okay.
There's a parapet.
Is it another, another stairwell?
There's a stairwell and the elevators in here.
Okay, and just a stairwell in the northeast.
So, the material, is it, do they call those cornices, the pieces at the top that hold up the?
Yeah, or like a fascia or something like that.
Yeah, and that's going to be like a, like a plastic, painted plastic.
We're still, we're still working through there right now, but it's moving towards like a brake metal.
Okay.
Painted brake metal.
Okay, and it'll be like somewhat sculpted to look, to have some detail in it? I'm hard to, I think, there's some scroll work there underneath?
Right, right, and so it would be something that would be, that would fit well with the aluminum brake metal.
Yeah.
So, haven't figured that out yet, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so the corbels, I guess, I said that.
Yeah, those are corbels.
Yeah, and, but you're saying that will all be metal, everything that's black at the top is going to be metal.
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay. I mean, I know you're going with the look that we have on our, on our other buildings in town.
Going around it, interesting.
Just stairs.
So Connie, do you have any other questions?
I like the idea of breaking it up with a darker brick and a lighter brick.
Yeah, I think the, the, the idea of the stamped concrete on the side, I think it's really nice.
And they could leave it, that gray color, it would match the gray brick and.
Yeah.
Something close to, now we got two breaks, we got the gray on the front of, what's it called?
Tequila bells?
Tequila bells, and we got the gray brick on, on the DC Cobb, like gray one.
Yeah, I, I don't think of, I guess, that as being gray, maybe I'm just missing, it's like yellow.
The brick on DC Cobb is weird, because it's got, almost like it's leathered, it's got like spots, I don't know if it's a hinging on or what.
Do you need, huh?
Yeah. Okay, um, so, and then for this one, we don't have a special thing we have to fill out, right?
Uh, no, there's no, right, there's just an issuance.
Yeah.
Did you want to talk about the potential for the addresses?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you for reminding me, Frank. So, there's been some discussion on how the addressing of these, these units will have, how many addresses could we potentially have on the front of this?
We have to figure out exactly what the board or Erica would like to see, but it would be potentially 110 River Street. Excuse me. Going from south to north, it would be a continuation of whatever the dental office is, so we're looking at potential four addresses.
Okay.
As a possibility.
Yeah, so there's been some discussion, it's not in this, this pitch, but to have stone, like carved addresses inside of the brick. So it'd be, I imagine, that'd be like a cement block with an engraving in it.
Which would be more appropriate of the historic district instead of stickers.
Yes. Thoughts on, on that proposal or that idea?
Definitely in favor of that, rather than stickers above the window or the entrance of each unit.
When you move to the next block, like, you had 200?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we should, we should probably, and I don't know, doesn't the post office assign addresses, or do we?
Chris does.
Chris does. We should probably jump at least four or eight, four, six, or eight numbers from one to another, in case somebody wants to split one of those into two.
Yeah. That is the concern with, you know, when you put it in a stone, it's pretty permanent.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that's the other problem with commercials, you don't, you don't know if the next guy in wants 500 square or 4,000.
It is still possible, Aliano operates this way.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it would be, it would be a little, see, I, I think, the idea of the permanence, especially the way I believe this is building out, where you could conceivably join these units together, right? Like someone, and that's what happened at the DC Cobb's in Blackberry, that was originally going to be four separate businesses, and now it's only two, and they each took half. And it would be strange to have still four giant carved addresses in the brick.
Yes. I think aesthetically, it would look nice about each section, and should it be all condensed, and the property owner or tenant would, for example, say the first, I believe the dental office is 106 North River Street, the next one would be 108. Then it would potentially be considered, called 108 through 112 North River Street, with the parking garage being potentially called 114 North River Street.
Yeah.
As an example.
Yeah, I think that, that the challenge would be is if it was all one unit, and you were like, had multiple doors into your thing, and you're like, oh, go into this address, even though that's not the address of the business you're going to.
I'm just one.
That's the property owner's concern.
I'm right.
I mean, might say it looks appropriate.
Right, but I'm thinking ease of use, I mean, somebody coming here from out of town, if they're going to park there, we may want to leave it with the 304 Hill Street address, only because if they know they're coming to Aliano, and Aliano tells them, hey, there's a parking garage in town or a parking lot. If they put it into their phone, they'll obviously get there, but they won't get to the entrance.
I think you want to get them, yeah, you'll want to get them on the street at the entrance. Yeah, so I, I think, I think it's good we talked about it.
Yeah.
I think, I think you guys, I mean, it's my feel that the village is a property owner, if they want to take that on, I think aesthetically, we, we like it.
Support the aesthetics of it.
Yeah, but I, I think it's more of a functional decision.
Sure, we'll have to see for sure how it ends up being.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just hope this business isn't called commercial. But, okay, so, and they also talked on?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The, the light fixtures?
Yeah, I, I think that's fitting with other things we have now, we have both that type of light fixture at least over at Cobb's and-
The windows, David, we went out of our way to adjust the windows, they match the arches from-
Yeah.
There's a wedding venue somewhere down the road here.
Yeah, bricks match.
Okay, the bricks, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, did you guys think about doing maybe arches on, I mean, I don't think it matters for the ones that have the awnings, but any arches on the, the second story of the tower?
And Dave, we didn't discuss that, it could be an option, yes, it could be.
You guys have a feeling on that, or?
I'd like to see it, yeah.
I'm trying to think of the multi-story, like, your, who worked or, and that's what, the second?
Yeah, they have, I think they all, they're all, yeah, I think everything's arched.
Okay.
I think like all of, you know, the auto buildings, you know, those house buildings, they all have that.
I like the idea of arched.
It's a lot stronger.
Yeah, exactly.
The windows cost a lot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's-
They would also match the village hall on the second story.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you guys have the full, oh yeah, on the second story, and then you have the full semicircle in the middle, right? Or did that go away?
No, it's, it's, I, it's a arch.
Okay.
Two, two large arches, and then two smaller ones.
Okay, yeah, so I think that's a good, but I think in general, in general, we can issue, I, well, we're okay with this, and these are things that could maybe-
Maybe to be more specific here, for the record, David, are you able to read off the names of those brick colors?
Sure.
I know there's a, um, answer there.
So we prefer the white brick, right?
And the dark red for me.
These two?
I would, not that I would design or write any names, I like the darker because we have so much light in this.
We have so much light in this area with all the new construction.
So this, so-
That for the darker accent wall?
Yeah, I would say, are you, this one looks like it's like painted, has this got a dye on the face?
None of these are painted bricks, so they'll just be-
That's the way it got cut or something? Yeah, it feels like it has a different, you know, the edges look different than the faces.
Well, these here look different than these two here, these two look different than these, but these two and these two look completely different.
Yeah, I definitely get the color, color angle.
Don't forget they'll be grown up.
Yeah, 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 it's just, you know, I want it to wear nice, you know? Is, is, is anybody else against this one as a recommended one? Okay.
What's the name of that?
This is Ridgeland Modular.
And Illini Common.
How about it? That's great, ILL.
I think a more, a really popular one around here is Chicago Common, is that, is that a, that was used in a lot of houses around here, if you heard of that?
I never.
It's called Chicago Common Brick.
And a pattern?
I think the-
The alternate?
Yeah.
Illini Ridgeland, Illini Ridgeland.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I think the, the lighter, like this, this brick up here with the lighter-
Via Illini.
Yeah, yeah, so have the colors match this, the diagram is-
Okay.
Cool.
That's all I need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, you have to lug all those around? Okay, there you go, yeah, for next Monday, right?
Yeah, you can leave it right there, I'm sure the board will wanna see these.
Yeah. Okay, so, um-
Make a motion to approve the certificate.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness, we have given the plans that were provided tonight and the feedback that we additionally added during tonight's discussion.
And to confirm, arches on the second floor and the two, the two bricks you listed?
And the, looking into doing stamped concrete on the side. I think that's very important. A thing to consider, I think that'll-
Stamped concrete off of Hill Street?
Yeah, right, to make that a more attractive-
More appealing.
Yeah, less just industrial concrete wall.
Okay, great.
Brick form on it.
Yeah, there, yeah.
Okay, you made the motion, Chair?
Mm-hmm, second.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have no other business on our item, on our agenda for tonight, for staff reports. Do we have an update?
Oh, yes, and I realized it as I was looking through it scrambling, why, I remembered why I couldn't find the specifically the special use, because there's the way that our zoning ordinance is for the, the special use is a little confusing, and it doesn't, for some reason, it doesn't specifically lay out a vote requirement, there's one for variation, and there's one for amendment, and so we have kind of gone with that, that's the vote requirement for all of them in the special use, and it's a majority of those present with three minimums, so three to one vote is our recommendation for a poll.
Okay.
So the recommendation failed?
No.
No, right, no, it passed, yes.
Do I need to say something?
Did it need the majority of the PZHC?
No, it is a-
All the members present.
Of the members present.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, a concurrent vote, but majority of those members present at the meeting with a minimum of three concurrent votes, so we're, we're good.
Yes, so if it, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Right, yeah, 'cause then it would've been a tie otherwise with our quorum, and then, and that would've been up in any way. Okay, do you need something here?
Do you need a chair signature one?
Okay, there you go, yeah, I got it. Um, is there anything you'd like to add, Steph?
I have no staff.
With you, Joe, anything you would like to add? No? Cue? Okay, cool, uh, well, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And most?
Chair, thank you so much, sir. Thank you all, thank you guys, thanks for attending and staying the whole time, really appreciate it. Oh, thank you, yes, maybe not the most exciting thing, but-